We're looking for it here.
I got it. If I can just get it pulled up. Plating committee starts, so I got it right. He's got the announcements here. Plating. I'm calling public, I'm calling Besire's City Council Committee meeting to order at 6:44 PM. Members present, myself, Kevin Myers, James Mee, Bruce Truca, C. Aaron Sharick, Doug Vogt, and Lisa Allsept. Public participation.
Hello. Phil Sheahanowitz, 310 South Spring Street. I was here last year about, and I believe there's still an open project, about the perhaps change to building permits, fence permits, the requirements for that. And I'm here because I'm still in the same boat with the same problems, and I hope council addresses that. I think, you know, in summary to make this brief, I think what needs to happen in one way or another is that, you know, there needs to be some minimum distances between a fence that a neighbor wants to build and my structures, for instance, so that I can still maintain my structures. You know, and if those clearances aren't being met, I think the city ought to, you know, treat me as equal as the neighbor who wants to build a fence and notify me that something's going to be happening that's certainly not in my interest or can possibly affect me. And whether you do the clearances or not, there's still, I think, needs to be a way to do a, you know, resolution process, because if I walk in with a bona fide legitimate problem and say, "There's gonna be a problem, there is a problem, there's, you know, violation of adesement if this happens," it seems to me the city's already a third party to this and needs some way to address that issue. So I'm here to bring up the issue again and hope the council addresses that at some point in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, I do, but I'd like to defer until the finance committee.
Well, that's fine, if you had anything overall to add. Okay. With that, I will call plating to order at 6:47. First thing on the agenda is a rezoning proposal at 1:00.
Do we need to do any minutes from the last night first?
I don't have.
And we don't have the.
I say, I say on those, we can wait till the next time. That's my opinion.
Okay, they can be approved as late as they need.
We can be approved. Okay. First thing on the agenda.
You can do both at the same time if you want.
Yeah, is on the information in front of you, plating, on the 100 East Center Street. It's a zoning reclassification quest, request, and 416 South Sandusky, a reclassification request. And do any of you have any questions? Jim?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment, I guess.
Microphone.
Oh, dang these things. Couldn't you have bought ones that just came on? Jeez, Lord. I think that this is a phenomenal idea, and the only reason I say that is, is because, granted, it's not right at the square of the city, but we have a large issue that's always been an ongoing issue, and that's parking. So more parking is always a good thing.
Yeah.
I was saying, I thought you started with the.
Center Street.
We're talking about both of them. We're just, if you have it.
It is the same issue for both. They're, well, not quite the same issue, but it's zoning changes for both.
The request.
And they're both here for the committee upon recommendation from Plating Commission to hold a public hearing. So what is before the committee tonight is just a motion to actually hold a public hearing on both of these issues. Because, Landon gave you a little bit of a sheet. Because of the 30-day notice provision, he indicated that he thought the week of May 17th or the week of May 24th would be the best, the quickest doable weeks to get those in place.
What motion?
We're asking, it's asking for a motion if somebody has any question before that, to make it like May 20, the week of the May 24th, so that we have a little time for the paperwork to get done.
For the 30-day notice.
And for the 30-day notice.
We usually go on like the Tuesday.
Yeah, we usually do Tuesdays.
It should be the 25th.
I'll let you choose the date.
How does the 25th sound to you? Bruce, May 25th, the Tuesday?
That's all right.
What works? We usually have it at 6 o'clock at the earliest.
I was confused.
6 o'clock sound okay?
Yep.
Doug?
I told you, you tell me when.
Okay, 6 o'clock. All right, so I need a motion for a public hearing on.
So moved.
100 East Center and 416 South Sandusky.
Second.
Whoa, plating only.
Well.
Sorry, that's probably my fault.
Other microphone is on, so shit's okay. All right, second.
Oh, okay.
I'm still on, okay.
All right, Doug made the motion, Bruce seconded, and all those in favor, are there any questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed. We have a gentleman here about the question everybody had about the brewery for the liquor license.
For the city health and safety.
He'll be for health and safety. So now, can you tell them exactly what building it is? So people were questioning.
Give me a go there.
It's okay. You can just say where it is, and then we'll go from there.
It's 125A East Rensselaer. That is what used to be a small apartment that is between Kay's Salon, used to be Brandy's, and Allegiant.
Okay.
There's a small 800 square foot apartment that is, is now going to be a very, very small brewery.
Okay.
Have we talked about that?
Yeah, that belongs in health and safety.
Yep.
Person dining for drinks, or you just like sell, build native products?
We'll talk about that, health and safety. Just wanted to.
I was asking him.
Right, he's like, I'm on that too.
Okay, if there's nothing else for plating at this moment, since it's gonna be a long night, we'll, I will adjourn plating at 6:52 PM.
What time did you start it?
6:44.
6:47.
6:47.
6:44 was the whole meeting, if I was asking.
And public lands and buildings is for you.
Okay, public lands and buildings. I call public lands and buildings to order at 6:52 PM.
I'm actually having a talk very well.
Disposition of.
This is the 114 East Lucas Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, he has to, okay.
This is just, we would need a resolution authorizing the service safety director to put that piece of property out to bid for sale.
Okay.
Out to bid or appraisal?
So.
Well, if, and that's it, if we can, if you wanna get an appraisal and then put it out for bid, if that is a minimal bid, that's something we've done in the past as well. Yeah.
Okay, so we've got Bruce and Mark who can decide what we should do at this point. I think Mr. Vogt cannot.
There's a chance I could benefit from this.
I don't know. I mean, it'd be nice to know exactly what it's worth, and can the winning bidder pay for our appraisal as well? Can we pass those costs on?
We can probably get, we, I can call around to the different real estate companies and see if we can get a kind of an unofficial appraisal. If you want a full market appraisal, yeah, we'd have to offer a couple, couple of bucks.
I'm not on your committee, but I will share my experience being on the land bank. A vacant lot like that, we've had several others appraised in the same central part of the town, just several hundred dollars is the value of the lot. 250, I believe, is what most of them are going for, so I mean, it's.
Sold.
Mr. Mead got it first.
How big is the lot, Russell?
It's not that.
If I had to throw a guess at you, Jim, you're about five sidewalk lengths of the width of the frontage, and so I'm not sure what.
I was thinking maybe, maybe 25 by 40 or 50, like it's.
Is it 25 by 50?
I'm fixing to tell you, sir.
Or 25 by 45, let's.
I've got the building.
We're gonna get the answer right now.
Most lots are at least socially private.
It was a big house.
All the same, all the same.
It was a big house, it went end to end.
So that, so that's not, that's buildable, it's not a buildable lot, according to zoning, correct?
I, yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't meet current setbacks.
That's what I wanted to know.
Is it anything in the right district?
Yeah, yeah, it could be built, but the setbacks, I mean.
They could get a variance.
Yeah, this, it would have to apply for variance.
But they'd have to apply.
Some setbacks.
Let's see, I just.
I'll just go ahead and.
You can set a minimal number if you want.
I don't know. Boy, that first.
Well, you're telling me that.
Well, he was waiting for the size over there, so.
I'm looking. Okay.
50-foot frontage, 120-foot depth.
Okay, bigger than I pictured.
It was a big house. It was, it took up the whole.
It had like three or four drug dealers.
And you can, you can build within four feet of a property line going down the sides and within 25 feet of the back property line.
Mr. Myers?
I said, the house was 38 feet in depth and 20, 32 feet, 32 feet across and 38 feet deep. The house was torn down.
The house. So is that a buildable lot?
You could squeeze something on there. You could.
Okay. And what size did you say it was? I'm sorry.
50.
50 by. 50 by 125.
No, it was 120.
120. 50 by 120.
Okay. Okay, so do we need to get an appraisal for that land then, or?
Up to you. We can get a formal appraisal, informal appraisal.
I wasn't sure what the rules were, if it's a buildable lot versus just a lot, a vacant lot. Because the vacant lot goes a little bit cheaper.
The ones that the land bank did were also buildable lots.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was only answering from the sale perspective.
No, no, both of you, that's.
Yeah, from the sale perspective, it doesn't matter. It's, it's a straight auction, so it's, just as long as the price is owned.
Mr. Mead?
I should probably know this, but where's the money go?
It goes to capital improvements.
Capital improvements, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
And capital improvements are.
Side blocks.
Side blocks that we haven't done yet.
They're on our list.
Okay, so should we set a minimum amount and make, make a motion to?
If he deals with that other day, I'll let him do it. Meaning you, you're the one that's telling me.
Telling you what, I don't know how much.
What properties were?
I don't do real estate.
Well, I'm just saying that you're.
I say, we've got Kevin who says a minimum of 250, but he's not in the committee. Should we go slightly higher than that, or?
I just think that we gotta worry about the.
How much did it cost to tear down?
Oh, a lot more.
That's my figure.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, we're on council to make sure that we are getting a fair shake on the property that we are getting rid of. I mean, we're not there just to give it away.
Do you know what the tear down cost was?
It was almost $11,000.
I thought it was supposed to be 11, 12.
You can ask that, doesn't mean you're gonna give.
Right, right, no, 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 but starting a minimum bid, not that high.
When we do, when we do put these out to bid, we do include language reserving the right to refuse any and all bids, because if we get one bid for $1, we don't have to take it.
I have a question. Don't we have to maintain those lots while we own them?
Yes.
So isn't it in our best interest to sell that lot so that we don't have to care for it?
Yes.
That's why you voted up last Tuesday, because we actually didn't know when season.
Yes.
And it actually, he voted up earlier that day.
It's insane.
I talked right beside it every morning.
If I knew a neighbor that wanted to take care of that for us.
I don't mow my grass at the office anymore, so you're parking up the wrong tree here.
I'll make a motion, I don't know what minimum bid.
I can't remember either.
I mean.
What did you say that the standard lots were going for? You picked that size lot? What were they going for?
Well, they're not that size.
I'll, I'll make a motion for that we request a minimum bid of 5,000.
Oh, that's way higher than I was picturing.
You don't have to say, I can agree with it. You can come back with a counter, I don't know, I never had to.
I mean, okay, so Kevin's saying that the land banks gotten rid of a few for around 250.
The difference there though, Sharick, is that, you know.
That's the land bank.
That, well, no, see, the land bank also paid to tear the houses down on them, but that money was paid back to the land bank through a grant.
Right.
And in this instance, the city paid to tear it down, and so the city's got some potentially recoverable costs. So I think that's the difference there.
Right.
I would tell you how we, how we do the bids on these two, because this is kind of your first time through this.
Please.
We set it with the minimum price when we have that, and any bidder that makes a bid, a qualifying bid, so it's at least that minimum price, are all invited to the final table, and any of those bidders who've made a minimum qualifying bid can have the opportunity to raise their price. So if you set a minimum bid of $1,000, you make it two or three people that all bid $1,001 or whatever it is, and then each of those qualifying bidders then does have an opportunity to raise their bids.
They have to go against each other to win.
So we, it gives us a chance for it to, you know, for a little bit more auction-y type experience.
1,000? Okay, I'll make a motion for the minimum bid to be $1,000, and with the stipulation we can refuse all bids.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's staying.
Okay, so next on the agenda is what we just talked about, and that is office space use in this building. Okay, so we need to open council office, council clerk office back up. We need to get the council clerk working again. We need all this to come to a halt. I was informed there is no current investigation on any of the parties, so that makes this no longer a crime scene and thus makes the office usable. It's also been brought up to maybe make it so that the clerk has everything he needs to do his job in his office, which would include a printer or copier and a curic, so he can have his coffee, and we don't have to have outside forces involved any longer. Keep the clerk's office, the clerk in the clerk's office so he can get his job done.
I make a motion.
Make a motion to open it?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, I'll take vote for that one. He cut it out just before, sorry, Mr. Truca. So all in favor to open up that office and get what we need?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, office opened. Was, I believe that is all that we have for public lands and buildings for this evening. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, we're gonna end public lands and buildings at 7:02 PM.
Can you yell one more, please?
Bye.
And we'll call health and safety to order at 7:02 PM. The first topic is the liquor license request. Do you have anything that you wish to say, or do you want me to, if you do, go to the podium and just state who you are and what your address is and all that, and tell me anything that you want to tell?
I don't think that's.
So really, the, the hope is to answer questions, but we are at, we'll be arrogant goat brewing. We'll be at 125A East Rensselaer. My name is Dave Jones, if you don't know who I am. We've got a couple partners that are all local as well, and the goal is to open a nano brewery, a very small brewery. We brew 50 gallons at a time. We're only looking at producing 1,000 or less gallons per year. The goal is to distribute to a handful of places locally, and then maybe have a taproom open, special events in town, and then, you know, a couple times a month kind of thing.
So it'll be a taproom?
Yes, 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 to answer that question. We have seats for about 15 people or so, so it won't be big.
And is that taproom in your immediate plans or future plans?
Immediate. It's ready now.
Okay.
So that the place is all set up and just awaiting inspections.
Okay. In the absence of Todd here, I know normally we ask him to ask these questions. I went and met with the police chief today, and he has zero issues with, with the license, and he's willing to sign it, and I'm gonna ask the same question to the law director. Do you have any concerns or issues?
No, no, no.
All right, any questions from anyone here?
I have a question. In the past, there were issues with other groups not being happy about groups getting liquor licenses? Do, do we have to have like a public forum to have them have a say, or?
No, what happens is the Ohio Division of Liquor Control has a request or application, I would say, for their license that gets sent to us. If we do nothing, it's awarded in 30 days. We have that 30-day period where we could object if we had valid reasons such as, you know, crime or whatever, things going on that would not benefit the community. So typically, what we've done now, I'm not gonna say everyone's always been the same, but typically what we've done is, you know, we either say yes, we want to object, or no, we don't want to object, and the committee does that, and then it goes on to full council to say the same thing. So in this instance, I'm asking health and safety committee for either a motion to not have a hearing or for a motion to object and request a hearing with the safety.
I make a motion not have a hearing.
My second.
A motion and a second to not ask for a hearing, thus allowing this to continue within 30 days. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna hop ahead to local version of House Bill 248. I did email some literature to members of the committee for your review. I'm not prepared yet, because it was just the other night that Mr. Taylor brought this to my attention. I don't want to start a discussion before we've had time to do our homework.
I have time to look at it.
So I want you to understand, we're gonna take a look at it.
Go ahead.
Not tonight.
Right.
So, and if you have any additional information that you'd like the committee to see prior, please send it to me, and I'll make sure it gets, or you can send it to all of us, but if you want to send it to me, I'll disseminate it to them and make sure that everybody has what they want to look at it. The next topic up, I'm gonna turn over to the second chair for health and safety, and I'm gonna abstain from conversation.
Okay, the Besire's Bratwurst Festival, street closures. It's been the standard procedure. They're asking the same request they've been asking for many years. I don't have it in front of me. I wish I.
Hello, let me look here.
Bratwurst Festival, street closures?
Oh. I had the letter.
I stepped aside because I wrote the letter requesting it, so I felt it was in my best interest to let him handle it.
No, I.
As everybody has, they had, you had the letter from Tuesday. It's the standard closures of, of Sandusky, Mary, Warren, Rensselaer.
If I could, real quick, I do want to let everybody know there is one change in there that wasn't in there in previous years, and that is.
Was river.
No, the streets are all the same. The sentence says, "We further request that the city of Besire's administrative assistant, in coordination with Besire's Police Department, contact ODOT to reroute wide load permit holders."
Right.
That has not happened in previous years. The administration thought the PD was doing it, the PD thought that the administration was doing it, and the last two festivals, we've had wide load trucks trying to come through. It's my understanding that there's a fee to file that, and I think they did not do that. And so I did include that in there because I do want the city to, to make that notification, so we aren't stuck with a truck driver trying to say, this, because they legally can't take a different route, even if we say, oh, you, you have to go around this way. They actually have to sit there for three days or wait for us to open it up at midnight for my driver.
Oh, really?
So I did include that change on there.
Again, I do have a question. When, when you, when you do like parades and stuff, and you have street closures, that, I always thought that went through like the police department.
So, if I may.
Yes.
Mr. Vice Chair. In the past, my understanding is, number one, it's different if it's a state route versus a not state route, which we're closing a state route. Then it goes down to if it's greater than 24 hours, then we're required by ODOT to post signage of a detour. Years ago, ODOT went and did that, and then that became the responsibility of the city, and I don't know what promulgated that. I just know that that's the city's responsibility. And then so, in working with Jeff Dunn, the festival committee has, you know, said, "We'll, we'll take this, 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 and this off your hands to try to alleviate work done by city people." So the festival committee actually gets the signage from Mr. Dunn and goes out and places it when the roads are being closed, and then we take it down when the roads are being opened. So because it's greater than 24 hours, so for instance, if we were having the Memorial Day parade, and you were driving through with a wide load, you're just gonna sit and wait for an hour. In this instance, you may have to sit for three days, so that's why I'm requesting that we spend the money, do the actual proper paperwork with ODOT, and that needs done 90 days in advance, which is why I set this a little earlier than normal in years past.
So is the state in that piece that's got to be done in 90 days, because there's lots of times that stuff doesn't get done when it's supposed to get done.
I didn't murder it there, but.
We have to have a date that it has to be done on, otherwise it won't be done.
We can put that in legislation.
You can actually request it be done immediately into legislation.
I'll say there's, there's some follow-up.
Any time to fix it if it doesn't get done.
Okay.
Well, you have to find it there.
Well, it's gotta be 90 days prior to the Bratwurst, so I'd say.
About now.
I'd say by May 15.
My suggestion is pass it as an emergency and require the, required to be done immediately.
Yeah, that would give it ample time.
If you give them a date in the future, they're gonna wait until the date in the future.
All right.
Okay, it's fine by me.
Is that your motion?
Sure. I move that we, we have the administration be in charge of road closures and notices to the state of Ohio, to ODOT, and, well, in the past, when the legislation passes as an emergency, that's when the clock starts ticking on.
The application.
Contacting ODOT.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, all of the favor, say aye.
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 So noted that I'm abstaining.
Yes. Motion passed. I will relinquish chair, back to.
Thank you, Mr. McKeever. Does anybody have anything else public to comment on health and safety committee business, or does any other member of the committee have anything they'd like to bring up this evening? Hearing none. At 7:11 PM, we are done with health and safety.
Okay, I will call finance to order at 7:11. First up on the agenda is the Bratwurst Festival.
I move that we go ahead and approve the.
Second.
Bratwurst.
Okay. All right, we got it.
If I may, that was a referral by council president. When Mr. O'Rourke was head of finance, and before I was on council, I came and had requested that we no longer pay the cleanup fees affiliated, associated with the festival, and the history went back to that, was at the time, of the 80-some members in the Ohio Festivals and Events Association, we were one of two or three that had to pay our city anything. And the deal that was, or the arrangement that came at that time, it was requested to be a permanent change, but Mr. O'Rourke wanted to kind of try it out and see how it went, was all the county-wide nonprofit groups, so Home Care Matters, the Colonel Crawford Lions Club, you know, anyone that you imagine seeing up and down the street, the Winford Athletic Boosters, Besire's Band Boosters, instead of paying the, the normal $30 per foot that a for-profit food vendor was paying, they were just charged a flat $100 fee, thus allowing them to keep hundreds, if not thousands, more dollars to put back into the community. That was the trade-off for not being charged a cleanup fee. And so what we had failed to do as a council, then when that was, that expired, we either needed to go back and make that permanent, or we needed to revisit that or whatever. So that's where the history of that falls.
Well, I think that it was done on, I thought it was like five years.
Mr. O'Rourke would only agree to two years.
Two years. Well, in a way, in a way, I, I think that with any lease or anything, you know, you, you at least do it for a set period of time. That way, the next, the, maybe there's some circumstances that will crop up in two years, or four years, or five years that you might want to be able to review without tying your hands.
Yeah, you do, you could do that, or you could rescind it, either way, but I think you're right, that you, you need a check and balance in there.
Okay, so, so the, the check and balance thing's great for both sides, because I was gonna say, if we made it permanent, $100 for the space, and you start charging twice as much for your spots.
No, no, that, this, no, that's not.
That portion has nothing to do with the city. That's, that's the Bratwurst Festival deal. That, that portion wasn't, that dollar, that wasn't.
It is that the city.
Okay, I thought it was a part of the, the. I thought it was a part of the, the agreement was because you guys gave...
Basically, that we were giving back.
They, they made, they said we would give back if you'd help us, and that's what it was. It's not, there was no agreement.
Well, I didn't know if it was written in as agreement, 'cause I, you know...
Well, just to clarify, uh, what was always done in the past, I mean, I helped with the Bratwurst Festival years ago, but, uh, you know, we would help the city workers and we would shoot, you know, shove everything from the curbs and the sidewalks to the street, and, and it would be a nightly thing that, uh, the city workers would run a garbage truck down through the, the center of the street and pick up garbage and sweep the streets and sweep the, the curbs and, and try to make it orderly for the next day. And what was always done in the past is that, that they kept track of the hours for the sanitation department, and they kept track of the hours for the street department, and they kept track of, of the hours that they had to pay for overtime for the police department. And, uh, it was charged, the, the Bratwurst Festival had to cha, had to pay the City of Bussiris for those services, but, you know, the Bratwurst Festival was always kinda working on a, a thread for, or, uh, monetarily compensated, I mean, so they, they had to raise a lot of their footage rents to some of the commercial vendors, and some of them pulled out because of it.
That is true. At the time, they were one of the highest, now they're about average. The, the other thing is they actually had to mortgage the building to be able to pay the city bill.
So then, then we, at one time, we, as a council, we decided, you know, okay, you know, promotes business to the City of Bussiris, brings in so much revenue to all the surrounding businesses, and, and so we will forgive you.
Part of the problem that Mr. O'Rourke had with it was at the time, the people that were in charge prior to me refused to show you any of their financial, and I will open that up to anybody who wants to see it. I'll show you every penny in, every penny out. Uh, the other thing I will tell you, uh, speaking as a festival representative, not as a committee member, if you will...
Yes.
We've made, you heard me just mention that we, we worked with Jeff Dunn to, to try to reduce city services. Not only do we help with the signage that way, no longer does a garbage truck drive down through. We now have dumpsters that they set out, and so on Thursday and Friday, all of our people, all the festival volunteers go and, and dump those trash barrels into the dumpsters. And then on Saturday morning, the garbage trucks, so one employee is coming through in the garbage truck, and he drives through from the south end to the north end. Myself, Doug Foat, Larry West, and Superintendent Todd Martin, uh, for the past four years have met that garbage truck, and we walk behind it, we dump all the barrels that were left over from, uh, Friday night on Saturday morning, and that takes about an hour to go from one end to the other. So we've reduced the, so the, really the only expense that the city's seeing is then the, the crew that comes in at, um, you know, midnight, eleven or midnight there on Saturday night, uh, you know, to clean. And we have our people that are still there helping, and like you said, pushing everything out into the street. And I'll tell you what, the last two or three years, it's gone super smooth and, and it's been nice. So to your point, I just wanted to, to share with you that we've done dang near everything we can to reduce the city's expenses. It's definitely not taken for granted.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to see something longer. I mean, uh, I don't know, can we...
Five years?
Say five years.
Okay.
So you amended to include five years?
Yeah, is that acceptable?
Yeah, let me ask you this, 'cause I'm, I'm, I'm on both sides of this right now, so I'm gonna ask as a festival person and as a council person, um, should there be any type of wording in there that that gets reviewed? I don't want it to come up to where the five years is up and, hey, you owe us this year. Uh, I, I'd like to know a year or two ahead of time what the plans are, if we can figure out a way to do that. Uh, I don't know. But I think from both sides of that, that's a fair assessment, so that if somebody's gonna have to raise a certain dollar amount or whatever, that...
Can we say it on the board in your form?
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can schedule it.
I mean, I don't know, you're legally, you tell us.
Well, that gets problematic that when none of us are in these seats in five years, or is somebody gonna remember? 'Cause that's what kinda happened here. We as a group forgot to readdress it.
I mean, you could put it on your open projects list with the date, that sits on, just sits on your open projects list with the date that, on this date.
Or am I short-circuiting the next council is what I'm getting at? Maybe, I don't know.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you put on that, no, they could be sent, that any council could be sent it at any point in the future, which, you know, that'd be short notice, but you could maybe just leave it on your open projects list that it, with the tick on the three years, it goes back to committee or something.
Excuse me, why don't you just make it permanent and then future councils down there can readdress it if they feel it's necessary?
Jim, I've got a comment. Bruce?
I have a question. Is this gonna be a resolution that's gonna cost money that you're passing?
Oh, yeah, everything costs money.
Then I like what he just said, 'cause then if you just do it once, if you wanna change it, then it costs you.
And you don't, but legislation always costs.
So, okay, and, and with, uh, it's just, uh, it's automatic, the council can rescind it without actually stating it.
Can I make another suggestion? And, and may, I don't know if you still have to publish this or pay, but can we go back to that last resolution when Mr. O'Rourke was on and just amend it to not have the two-year date, but to make it permanent on that piece of legislation?
No.
No, I think we could create a new...
I just, I just wanted to ask to your point.
No, I think we could create a new piece of legislation. It'd be, it's the same cost.
Okay.
I was gonna ask, um, making it permanent, can we put on there that if they change it, it has to have at least a year's, as part of this, they have to have at least one full year's advanced notice? That way, the, whoever's in charge of the Bratwurst Festival isn't just suddenly, hey, by the way, you owe us money, you know? I, because it's not gonna stay...
Okay, so Bruce is gonna make the motion as in saying that we will...
Stated.
The city will assume all cost, assume cost with, uh, if council wants to rescind it, they have to give them a one-year notice?
So, sounds good for you? Yeah, that sounds great.
And Mr. Me just seconded it.
All right, is there any other question, comments? You, do you have any other? Okay, all right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Abstain. Mr. McKeeber?
Yes.
Abstain.
Yes, got you.
If I could also point out, um, I lost the train of thought. Go on.
Okay. Joyce, your turn.
Really?
Yep.
Your turn. I was off to turn this on. You might not be able, I'm a little muscled behind this one.
I like that one.
Well, I can breathe better in it, but you can't hear me as well. I added another fund that we were gonna have to create because we did not add the coronavirus relief fund into this year's budget. So we'll have to recreate it for the simple reason that we thought everything was gonna be spent, done, sent back by the end of December, and then on December thirtieth, the federal government decided to not do that, that we had another year. So we have to recreate it because we have, uh, some money that, uh, is unencumbered right now, uh, and not appropriated because of some costs that weren't as high as we thought they were, and when the POs were closed, the money went back in the fund. So we need to recreate that fund with general government, uh, category of materials and supplies. Then we need to create Fund two seventy-one, which is the Local Fiscal Recovery Fund twenty twenty-one. And the reason it's named that and has a year on it, the guidance is still coming down from the Treasury. I thought, and I did this yesterday because the state auditor sent out guidance, and then today they said, well, maybe we jumped the gun. And they're, they're changing maybe the way we're gonna have to report it, but I need to have the fund created so that when the money comes in, I have a place to put it, because it has to be separate from everything else for reporting purposes. And what I was told yesterday was that you don't appropriate money in this fund. If we do a, if we decide to use this for infrastructure, for water lines or sewer lines, then it has to be charged to the water or the sewer fund. And then we reduce the balance in this fund and put it in the water fund, if that's a project we did, as recovery revenue.
Which is different from a transfer?
A, a transfer is illegal.
Just trying to understand.
Exactly, and that's what I said, we can't do it as a reimbursement, we can't, because that's really what it is.
Extra coronavirus money, is that what you're saying?
This is the new, uh, well, it's a different, this is the one that was just passed this year.
This is for tax revenue recovery?
Uh, partially, yes.
What are we looking for, do you know?
It's for infrastructure, it's for recovering revenue loss. Twenty nineteen is the base year, so if we had, didn't make as much in tax revenue or whatever in twenty twenty as we did in nineteen, then we can put some of this money into the general fund to replace that. But at this point, I don't know how to do that, if we don't have the money anyway, because, and they keep changing.
So none of this money that goes into that fund will have to be okayed by council to be spent? It'll be able to be...
It will be approved in the actual project, I mean, whatever it is...
Whatever we spend it on when we approve that.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll be knowledgeable about, like, this money's coming from this, okay?
Mm-hmm, yes.
That's what we need to know.
Yes.
Uh, in this past week's newspaper, there's a gentleman that I work with, and he brings in a daily Sandusky register, and the City of Sandusky, that's what they're doing with their coronavirus funds that they just received, is they're taking that additional money and they're trying to do additional streets with that money for this year already. But I mean, they're using that money to increase the amount of streets that they're going to recon, reconstruct in the City of Sandusky, Ohio.
Okay.
For infrastructure purposes, because they said that, you know, they wanted to get more streets done last year, but due to the coronavirus and, and economic, uh, you know, status that they were afraid to spend the money, so they're saying, oh, okay, we're gonna take the money and we're gonna do additional streets.
And, and you know, that could be something that we do. At this point, nobody has this money.
Okay, so it's not been given to us yet?
It's not been given to us yet. They had sixty days from the time of passage, which is gonna put us into maybe, I don't know, uh, at least the first of May to the end of May before we actually get the funds.
And we don't know how much that's gonna be?
Uh, the last I heard, it was about one point six million that we would receive this year.
For here?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we get a second one point six million next year.
Okay.
It all has to be spent by the end of twenty twenty-four. And each lump of, or whatever you wanna call it, of money, like this year's, I, I put twenty twenty-one on it because we're receiving it this year. Next year, I'll, I'll probably have the same thing with twenty twenty-two on it, because you can't co-mingle the two years. And I mean, it's...
So it'll be two separate funds then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you'll be able to hold on to some of the money in the first fund and still have money put in the second fund?
Joyce, did, you said it can't be co-mingled, so like if you had one three point two million dollar project, you couldn't use all one point six million for one three point two million dollar project? You couldn't co-legal it like that?
They could, they, yeah, both years' funds could be used. You'd probably use up the twenty twenty-one and then part of twenty twenty-two to do the project.
You just put it out?
Yeah.
So you, like, your policy...
Well, I, I'm not putting, setting anything in stone at this point. So, because the, the state just put out their first guidance at ten o'clock yesterday morning, and by this morning, they were saying, maybe we jumped the gun, so...
Could you elaborate on the airport?
Yes. Uh, the Airport Coronavirus Response Grant Program is something new through the FAA. We received something very similar to that, uh, last year, and last year, I didn't realize that it was supposed to be put in a separate fund, which wasn't a huge deal, I tracked it separately. But we basic, that was a reimbursement grant that we were able to buy the lawnmower that we needed to keep the, uh, areas around the taxiways taken care of, and we also paid utilities, and we paid, um, manager fees out of that, which saved the general fund money last year. We got thirty thousand dollars last year, and...
Coming up to something to build on, that we were doing something with the lawnmowers this year, this money was coming out of the general.
And that's, that's a different, that's a different airport grant from this. This is separate, and this is just...
It's coming out of the general though, right? Five percent, yeah?
Yeah, part of that, part of that will come out of general, possibly. Because with this new infrastructure money and, and whatever, it could be that this taxiway extension will be paid a hundred percent, but we don't know that a hundred percent for sure at this point. So we had to budget it in case it went that way. Yeah. Because somebody always points it in another direction somehow. So, so anyway, in this case, I, I put in the, uh, the new airport grant program and just contractual services, because this will be used probably again for manager fees and, uh, utilities for this year, 'cause it's only thirteen thousand dollars this year. So that's where the fund creation came from.
Now you're approving?
Do what?
Run the numbers. Relief fund, how much was that?
She said one point six...
Oh, no, 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 no. On the corona, uh, coronavirus relief fund that we're recreating this year, uh, and that's, that's in the appropriations on the next page. That's four thousand seven sixty-two fifty-nine. On the, on the Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, we're gonna get one point six million this year, to my knowledge. That could probably change too. That's an approximate. Then on the Airport Coronavirus Response Grant, that's thirteen thousand.
Okay, on your appropriation now.
And I didn't even put that on the appropriation, and I should've.
So we're actually appropriating it?
This is, I mean, it's been a little crazy around here, you know?
We understand.
So then will we be informed if where we're gonna spend this money?
Right.
That's what she asked.
That's, that's what concerns me, 'cause I, I see the wants and needs of garages that need built. I, I just, I'm wondering if this is an open checkbook?
No, it has to go through you guys. Yeah, it has to go through you guys.
That's why I asked.
I don't, yeah.
No, I'm not saying you're spending it. I'm just saying, it, it sounds to me like you can take money out of this that we use the general, that we normally would use from the general fund to keep our general fund normal, I guess, not spend from your checkbook, but spend from your savings account?
Yeah, I see, yeah.
That's what I, that's how I was saying it. I was like...
And that, and we would come to you for that. Like I say, it's not actually, I don't know how it's gonna work.
Right, right. Keep us up to date.
Yes, yes, I'll, I'll do the best I can with that, because this is crazy. Yeah, yeah. So I guess you need a motion to create the funds.
So moved, request it as emergency.
Yes, please.
Any other discussions? If not, all of the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side. Motion passed unanimously. Okay, appropriations, Joyce?
Okay, the appropriations. Uh, we need funds in the Park and Recreation Land Fund, under Parks and Playgrounds, Personal Services, and I'm adding thirty-five thousand dollars because we had changed the bill at last year to be able to bring on a couple employees that would work half in the street department, half in parks, if you remember that?
Right.
And, uh, in my mess at the end of the year, I forgot to include the coverage for that. So that's what this is for. We may not use all of that. We're still gonna try to get, it's really hard to find seasonal workers, but we got an application in yesterday that looks very promising. This young man, and, well, I think the mayor knows him, and... man, and, well, I think the mayor knows him, and, and Kelly knows him, but he's going to college at Toledo, and he wanted a summer job, and he thought he'd like to work in park, and from the sounds of it, he's a good worker, so we're looking forward to that.
But with those jobs, do they no longer have that program for local kids during the summer?
I know what you mean, my brother painted lockers one year.
It was through CHIP, and then it was through another group, and-
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, we've got, we've got the-
We've got, we have certain ones to get those kids, and they do all this great work, and-
We've got the ones through, through Goodwill, but I think last year, that didn't work out for us, we had people that- Ah.
Is it thirteen, or higher?
No, no, it has to be higher than that, because they can't run equipment, I don't think, until they're sixteen or-
Food services, either point was thirteen and fourteen, I mean, like, that, behind the scenes, and then you had fifteen, sixteen-year-olds, and then seventeen and up, so.
So, but I, yeah, I don't really have anything to do with the hiring, but our, two girls that we have that are through the Goodwill program are just doing an excellent job, but, uh, as far as getting someone for the parking-
So you're thinking probably sixteen?
Yeah, I'm thinking so, yeah. So anyway, that's the Park and Rec Fund, uh, and then the Coronavirus Relief Fund, like I said, we're just re-appropriating the funds that were released from POs, uh, which is four thousand seven hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents, um, then in Access Television, somehow, you know, John managed to go through his allotment in the first quarter.
I got us this far.
Is this your receipt?
Seriously?
It's Micro Center, no, it's Micro Center, so that may be something she needed.
I'll check it out, I don't know.
Okay.
Anyway, we just need fifteen hundred dollars in his, uh, materials and supplies to get him through the rest of the year, so that's not too bad. Then in solid waste, we had one of the garbage trucks go down, uh-
The other new, uh, we'll say-
Where's the new one?
The new truck is here, they had it taken for, um, there was something not quite right, and it went over to Freightliner, under warranty, no cost to us.
Right, Minnesota this time.
Yeah, yeah, and it's being delivered tomorrow, 'cause I had to cut the check today so that they can pay for it when it gets here.
It came, and it had to go to Freightliner to have something worked on, and this was from Mr. Dougie.
And it came already detailed, like, it has the logo?
Yes, I think it, I think it's ready now, that's where, where, why they had to send it somewhere else to finish all that stuff, so, uh, so anyway, we need seventy-five hundred dollars for equipment maintenance for the rest of the year, so that's what that is, and I guess, since I forgot to put that, uh, airport money in the list of appropriations, you've got the categories on your creation there, we just need to put thirteen thousand dollars in there.
So you're gonna, you're gonna add that on there, so we just make it one legislation to save some money?
Yes, yes.
For thirteen thousand dollars, uh, to the Airport Coronavirus Response category?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Joyce, um, I don't have my full balance sheet with me, I don't know if you have yours with you tonight or not, my question is, is for the, the money the council has to spend on equipment?
How?
If we would like to get an additional copy machine set up the same as the lease is in the administration office, do we need to appropriate money first, or do we appropriate that after we find out what it's costing, or how do we go, what's the steps to do that? Because we, we would like to request money put into that line to obtain a second copy machine.
Let me grab my sheet and see what you have.
Try your order.
Sorry, thank you.
Do you, I'm just questioning, do you guys lease them?
Would they have, that one's leased, and so I think it would be an, just an add-on, but I don't know, we've gotta make sure we got the money to do it.
Well, and then as far as I look at it, if you're using five hundred copies over there, then all of a sudden you're using two fifty there, two fifty here.
Right, there's, there may be an extra cost to the machine itself, I, I don't know if it would be-
But I mean, it's-
Probably in, a small amount.
Is there room in there for it?
Yes.
Sure.
I wonder, I've never set foot in there.
Not, not into the actual office, right there, but-
In my back office.
Back room.
Okay, good.
Um, I have a query.
That would probably be in outside contracts, and I can't tell you exactly what a lease would be at this point, I know, I know that-
Should we just look into it, and then at our next meeting, have a-
Yeah, and right now, you've got, uh, fifty-one hundred dollars unencumbered in outside contracts, so if you were to enter into a contract and do something, we could replenish this after the fact.
All right.
So that you have what you need for later in the year, so you probably wouldn't have to do anything right now.
Okay, that was all, thank you.
The, uh, some of the lease agreements I've seen, uh, you know, like for police department or whatever, are like three hundred and fifty dollars a month or something, I think that, I don't know, I, I have one down in income tax that we only pay fifteen hundred dollars a year, now, that, and that includes so many copies, and then we buy paper and, you know, whatever.
That's correct.
So, you know, there, there's, you can spend a lot of money, or you can spend not so much, and not so much is better, just saying, but, and ours is through, well, I guess it's not, uh, MT anymore, I'm not, I'm not sure, is MT still a Mansfield? Yeah, um, I guess it was a salesman who maybe left MT for some reason.
So all of the offices don't actually lease their equipment from the same company?
No, not necessarily. I mean, we've checked into things before, yeah, you would think.
And easier to deal with one good person.
Yeah, I, I-
It's a woman thing.
Do we need to refer that?
I, I, I don't know who would do that type of, who sets that stuff up, I mean, Kelly?
For over there, yeah, Kelly has, but like, for the income tax office, I do it.
See, that's where things get lost, 'cause maybe we could get a better deal if we had all the equipment rented from one facility.
Well, that's kinda hard to do it right now, yeah.
Maybe that's something public lands and buildings-
And then police department just got their own.
Yeah, public lands and buildings.
Are you making a referral?
I am.
We can't, this can't, this isn't a-
I can't, I'm, I'm like-
But we're already, everybody's already in leases.
In contracts, yeah.
Yeah, in contracts, so.
But figuring out-
We have had people come in and take a look at things.
Went, figure out when they, they, oh, the lease is in, what all companies we're using, and get bids for-
Okay.
Just get a better deal.
All right, so, we have one, two, three, four, five appropriations, does anybody have any questions? If not, uh-
I'd like to make a motion to approve the five appropriations as an emergency.
Okay, are there any other questions? Did you do a motion on the fund creation?
Yes.
Yes, that, that was included.
That was Myers, and then me.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I checked out.
Oh, it wasn't me, it was me?
Okay, if there's, if there's no other questions on the appropriations as an emergency, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Doesn't have an O in it, does it?
All, motion passed unanimously, okay, um, we got the supervision of the council clerk and duties. How? The clerk, does Todd have an outline of that, or do you?
Todd has created a, um, a job description, you know, I have, uh-
Do you have it?
I have a copy of it, yeah, I can forward that to you.
Do you like it?
It's pretty sensitive, it was like four pages long, I thought it was pretty sensitive.
That's a lot of stuff he does.
But in-depth, correct?
Exactly.
You always change a letter.
Yeah.
It's a starting point. Bruce, what do you think?
He does his job.
Yeah, he knows it better than you. So you wanna-
I mean, it'll be able to be reviewed anyways, I mean, but it's a-
I'll, uh, I'll shoot that to, uh, to you, submit to your committee, if you want to include that as part of, you know, whatever your resolution is, you can actually, uh, if they're supervised according to the job description, you can add it to it.
That sounds good to me, you have any objections?
Well, as far as, part of the motion will be that finance is going to oversee this position.
Can we add that he, so he has to contact the head of the finance committee for any leave or any, like, that needs to be added to it kind of thing?
That's so.
Right, and, and he can disseminate, uh, material to us as well, I mean.
Okay, is that in your motion?
Sure.
So, just to make sure we're clear, we've got, following the job description, we've got directly supervised by the finance committee, we've got his, he will report directly to the chair of the finance committee, the finance committee chair has oversight.
Immediate oversight.
Immediate oversight.
Did you want the performance evaluations?
Yeah, yeah, that was the other thing, I, I would like to see the finance committee tasked with his supervision to meet with him on a quarterly basis for performance evaluation.
And, you know-
Okay, that's motioned?
Yeah, that's motioned, and, and-
That's a good motion.
As, as an emergency?
As an emergency, and, and, and just to, so the finance committee knows that they're in conjunction with, uh, public lands and buildings, that I know it's, you know, I don't really wanna muddy the waters, but it's gonna be up to them to help us, uh, administer this entire plan.
Agreed, agreed.
Agreed, even though I'm not in your-
I'll second Bruce's emergency motion.
Okay, are there any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Passed unanimously, all right, and the forming of the, uh, ethics. You wanna discuss that and figure out how to work on that, and bring that up at the next one, so we got some guidelines?
I think that makes sense that we, we all take some time to review, maybe we find another city that's done something similar, and gives us time to, to take a look at it, and all seven of us can give our input to it, back to this committee, and then I think at our next meeting, maybe we can set forth, or do we go ahead and create it now and set its rules later, that, I actually think that's better.
I, I, I ask that we create it now?
Yeah, I think we create it.
I, I'd like to make a motion to create a seventh committee within council, uh, that'll be called the Ethics Committee.
So you, you'd make a motion to amend your rules in that section that have the committees-
One eleven point thirteen?
To, you amend one eleven thirteen to include-
To add, to create a new committee, uh, Ethics Committee.
And be appointed by, most of your committees are appointed by-
All of our committees are appointed by the council president, so, and then, and approved by us, so I think we task him with setting which four members he'd like to have on that committee.
I have two questions. Are we going to amend it to create a committee that will then, do we have to add the wording that we talked about earlier to, that this Ethics Committee would then be the Ethics Committee for the different city, like, all of it?
Administration-
That Ethics Committee's gonna have to, uh-
Define it so. Well, I, but I didn't know if we had to put that in the rules before, like, in the formation before we create the rules.
I think it'll eventually go into one eleven point thirteen under our roles and responsibilities, which I think right now are gonna be blank, unless you-
And then I'm wondering-
Have a couple bullet points to, to throw out now.
And then I'm wondering, should we appoint members, or should we pick a specific thing, like, the four wards, or, you know, because, I mean, the four wards are the, what would cover the whole city?
I hope the council president assigns members to-
The council president assigns members to committees, but this is a, a committee that's, that is, but it's, it's going to be kind of outside, if he has a problem, he'd have to come to us, if you had a problem, you'd have to come to, well, to them, see what I'm saying, so actually picking and choosing exactly who you want to do it versus just saying the wards, that the city is four wards, so that is one person to represent each part of the city, to stand up for all the people up here, and it doesn't have, you know, say, Reese's favorite picks, or Kurt's favorite picks, or it's literally the, the people who are representing each-
Would that be your suggestion, I'm sorry, I may-
I don't care about that.
Would that be your suggestion to make that that way every term, or that you just this initial term until the, the next election's equal?
That would be something to keep that way, so that it's not muddied by anybody's favorites, 'cause if, if I, you know, if I was in charge, I'd be like, mm, I want Lee's on my side, I want Bruce, ooh, and you know what, Jim, Jim makes a good, you know, putting that so that it's not-
He has no, they, whoever's in charge has no control-
Nobody has, nobody has control other than the voters.
On who's elected in the four wards.
The voters are the ones that have control at that point.
All right, so my motion to create an Ethics Committee to be put into one eleven point thirteen, that will consist of each of the, each of one of the four members of each ward.
The four members would be made up of the wards?
The four ward council persons.
And they'll elect their own chairman?
Yeah.
Yes.
Right now, except Bruce, what do you think? Or you, you, you're not a committee member.
Okay, I got a motion. I have a motion. Okay, are there any other further discussions on this? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed unanimously, okay, uh, one last thing on, the agenda was for the Kramer EMS study.
I don't, pardon, what'd you say?
Well, go ahead, Bruce.
No, I, I heard Jimmy say something, what?
Ah, whatever you want.
Can you give us an update on what's going on with EMS, is that part of this, or?
So, essentially, the, the administration is putting a plan together to offer services to the, the townships as well as to our city, we've applied for the SAFER grant, um, Dr. Kramer already gave, he looked over the SAFER grant and gave it his, his thumbs up of approval. When we initially had asked the administration to spend that, I think it was thirty-seven hundred dollars, I was under the impression that was gonna help with the SAFER grant, I didn't realize how close we were to the application of the SAFER grant, it's already been applied for, while I value Dr. Kramer's opinion, I think at this moment that thirty-seven hundred dollars is not gonna make a hillbets difference to anything, and so I'm, I'm against appropriating the money currently, now, does that mean in the future? No, I, I still think in the future, maybe if we're gonna make any changes or do anything that, that we need to, to utilize him, he's, he's a, he's a very smart man, and, and I just think in this instance, the wheels are already in motion, and, uh, you know, the grant's been applied for, and what he has to say about it, is it gonna change that grant?
So was that the initial, you, was that the initial reason was going back to him? He wasn't looking for him to say how many people we need because we're covering so many townships now?
So he did say that initially, but it was geared towards the city, it didn't include the county.
Yeah, his first one was, well, we were going back to him so he could include all the, the, uh, all the townships, and so, we were, I was under the impression that he was gonna give us a number that would cover all the townships.
Yep, he did.
That's how I understood it, too.
So, I have a question. I have a question. Um, all right, so we paid Mr. Kramer, Dr. Kramer, 'cause he's a doctor, okay, Dr. Kramer, sorry, uh, once, and he did it for the city.
Yes.
Then we all came in here for a meeting, he was live via video chat, Dr. Kramer at that point said, looking at the numbers, we are fine for a rough starting point, we would need somebody more in the future, but to start it, including what we had said, that we were good, so we talked about hiring him for more, well, Kurt brought it up, after it had been said, yes, we're good, and when Kurt was asked, would that be for the SAFER grant, he says, he said yes, now, if that was the- Now, if that was the reason we were doing it at that point in time, to get the extra numbers, to figure it out, to make things better for the SAFER grant, but we already had to apply for that prior to being able to do this, then that makes it unnecessary currently.
Correct.
And the fact that Dr. Kramer said it's a good starting point means that we're already in the right ballpark.
Yeah, and it's my understanding that the SAFER grant, it's for three years, and in years past, it had been, they paid a, I think it was a hundred percent the first year, then it went down each of the next years. Now it is one hundred percent paid for the full three years of the grant. And we did request funding for six employees, which would give you two guys on each shift. And that's, that's just from the SAFER grant standpoint. The, the administration's looking at ways, you know, through EMS billing revenue such to hire even additional numbers on top of those six.
So, would it be good for us to look at having Dr. Kramer check this out after we've gotten started again, then? To see where we would need things?
My opinion is, we have a fire chief, that, that, that's his department, and I believe that's his job.
I know I'm not on this committee, but I would much rather spend thirty-four hundred dollars and a half, or thirty-seven hundred dollars and have a professional tell me that we're actually entering into a contract with the townships that is feasible for the city to afford with the amount of people on staff that we need. I, I don't. But you keep saying the SAFER grant, we, we got shot down with the SAFER grant.
Correct.
So, I, that's like, to me now, I think, mm, that's like saying if I'm going to win the lottery tomorrow, then I'll pay off my house.
Right.
It's a chance that we may not get it, so. I would rather be assured that we're making a wise choice with the townships, and not taking on more than we can, and not taking a beating on the money. And he's a professional. That's just my opinion. I was under the impression that that was going to be done. I didn't for one minute think that it was just for the SAFER grant. I thought it was for us to make a wise move. So I misunderstood. To safely cover the surrounding towns. Yes, yes.
And that's why I second that, because I'm thinking, you know, why would we want to make a decision on stuff that we don't know about, but there's a professional out there that's offering his services to help us? And I didn't have the understanding it was for the SAFER grant. I had the understanding it was for us to make a wise decision on how to set up this, this EMS, and thirty-seven hundred dollars to me, it sounds pretty dirt cheap.
Yeah.
Initially, we had authorized the, the administration to pay the fee, and then they chose not to, and so council president referred it to have the council budget paid for it, was where this is at.
Well.
I guess my, my take is, is two-sided. It's the administration's job at this moment to set up a program, and number two, you know, and again, I'll give Dr. Kramer all the accolades in the world, but he's a retired fire chief. We've got a fire chief. You know, to me, they're, they're both equal level of professional that can, can, you know, look at and know what they need.
What my upset part is, though, is that we have to make the decision as council. I would like to be able to have facts.
Me, too.
That, okay, this gentleman says this, and this, this administration says this. I want to be able to compare numbers. I just don't want to, you know, go into it blindly, and then we have to make a decision. Why, why is thirty-seven hundred dollars such a big deal?
I, I don't think it's the, the dollar number, but I guess then my question to, to come back at you on that is, then let's find out what it costs to, instead of having him just look at some paperwork, let's get him up here for a meeting, or have him log into a meeting where we can go back and forth with him and ask questions. I'd rather see what that's going to cost and pay that.
Well, he already stated that he would be willing to do that.
He did, you're right, okay. All right.
And see, you feel more comfortable with this because you've been in meetings with the mayor, and you've sat with other people, and you've went over these numbers. I am not comfortable, I will not vote to approve something that I'm not certain that we are doing in the best interest of the people, not only in the townships, but the city. I don't want us taking a bath money-wise on it, and I don't want to risk anyone's health.
It, it would be nice for the administration to come to all of us.
Well, here, here's, then let's do this. We initially authorized the, the administration to do this. Now let's authorize and direct the administration then to, to pay that thirty-eight hundred dollars. I don't think it needs to come out of council budget, is what I'm getting at.
It feels really important to me to know that Dr. Kramer says, hey, you need this many firemen to cover this many people, you know, EMS support, this is what you need. I want a professional to tell me that.
I'd like to authorize and direct it to come out of their budget, and I, I, that's my issue, because I don't think it needed to come out of our budget. That's why I was against it.
Yeah, I, I assumed, I assumed they were going to do it. I assumed when we voted on it.
And they sounded like they were in agreement, and.
Yeah, and then they backpedaled away somewhere. I don't know where, but.
I gotta legal watch.
Can, can I make a suggestion maybe that, that will eliminate some of the conflicts here? If everybody wants to bring in Dr. Kramer, um, my office has an outside contract line item. I'm not sure how I should say it right now, but we use it for outside counsel. We use it for, like, professional engineer meetings.
They used it for Dr. Kramer the first time, didn't they?
I, I brought that in favor the first time, yeah. Um, if council wants to, or this committee wants to just have a de facto resolution that they're, want me to hire them through our budget, keeping in mind that it spends all my money, I may come back to you for a budget adjustment later on down the year, but if you want to direct my office to do it, uh, we, we'll get an email to you.
Well, if you want to be intelligent about the whole situation, I would say yes.
Would you say that may be a way to expedite it?
Yes.
Just create, create less legislation.
So moved as an emergency.
Well, i- if you're just passing the resolution directing me to do it as a committee, I think that's enough, and I'll take that direction.
So moved and we're directing you.
Okay, socket.
Aye.
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 Now, somebody has to remind me tomorrow.
Uh-oh.
I'm not.
So I got a, so I got a question. If we authorized the administration to do that, and they said, oh, you're just kidding? I mean, is, is that, is that politically correct?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
It's unethical.
It's not an ordinance. If you pass an ordinance, um, or, or a resolution directing them to do it, a formal one through council, then yeah, then we, they would be required to file that.
I would be.
But if you're filing it, we can call him. Is that?
Yeah, I mean, you, you can call.
We don't have to wait on them, too.
Yeah, what I'm saying is.
I'm fine with that. I'm.
He's, he's just asking about before.
But my, my office, from time to time, does contract with outside experts for survey, or surveys, or.
Legal matters, for any legal.
Appraisals, you know, that sort of thing, so this, I, I, I think my office was the one contracted it in last year.
Yeah, I just wanted to answer for future reference on.
I got you.
Which way we're going.
If, if it's an ordinance or a resolution, you know, that's.
Then, then we can look at the mayor and say, are you going to do it, yes or no?
Yeah, yeah, but this way, you don't have to do it over, you know, do that, direct me, and I'll do it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, uh.
It's peace of mind.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Any other items from the finance one? Discuss on our open project? Yes.
Are you going to discuss the park income tax later tonight?
Yes.
That's on the open projects, that's what I'm asking them. We, we haven't said anything, but you can put your two cents in.
You sure can.
It wasn't on it, but it's an open project.
It started out that way, but then never got added to this one. Right, that's what I'm saying.
It's an open project.
I'm welcome. I, I'd like to hear you.
Me, too.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, go ahead.
Thanks for setting in all that time.
Yeah.
That's all right.
Yeah, everybody else left you, Bill.
That's all right. I'm not a, uh, public speaker anyways, so the less audience I have, I guess the better. I do have a handout here, though.
Well, thank you.
I'm sorry. He's been a baby lately. I'm not helping him.
Okay, my name is William Stuckert. Uh, my address is two zero five North Spring Street. You most, mostly all know me as Bill. After the last joint council committee meeting on March eighteenth, at which time Mayor Reeser proposed a park fund income tax levy, I became curious about his comparative parks budget data, comparing Bucyrus to other cities. If you will recall his, uh, uh, data on his handout, uh, I've included that, uh, on my handout here as well. With little research, I found some additional interesting data for your consideration in making your decision about this tax levy, and of course, included it on this handout. First, I would like to point out that all of the cities in this comparison have higher revenue per capita than Bucyrus, with our neighbors to the west, Upper Sandusky, being slightly higher at eight hundred and sixty-two dollars per capita, with just a little over one-half the population of Bucyrus, and an income tax rate of only one percent.
Bill, may I just, so I'm following this, are you talking the less income tax per capita?
That is, that is revenue per capita.
From income tax?
Total revenue, total revenue.
Just, excuse me, just a second. Um, I put the revised appropriations, I corrected them, emailed them to Todd, and I also put a hard copy under his door, okay? So, should be good.
Upper Sandusky also has the second highest per capita park budget. Notice on my handout, the five cities with the highest park budgets. Wooster, a park budget of one million, seven hundred thousand dollars with a one and a half percent income tax. Pickwa, one million, twenty-six thousand dollars with a two percent income tax. Fremont, nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars with one and a half percent income tax. Bellevue, nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand with two percent income tax. Bellevue has the highest per capita park budget of a hundred and sixteen dollars, with a population of only eight thousand. Belle Fountain, seven hundred and forty-five thousand with only one and a third percent income tax. This shows that the other cities in this comparison can fund their parks better with income tax rates equal to or lower than the Bucyrus current tax rate. Instead of burdening the taxpayers of Bucyrus with higher taxes, you should investigate how these other cities fund their parks. In closing, I will reemphasize my remarks at the March eighteenth Joint Council Committee meeting about the impact of increased taxes on our already struggling local economy. Many of our taxpayers are in the lower income range and do not have the extra funds to pay for parks through higher taxes. A tax increase could mean they and/or their children would not be able to participate in some activities at the park because of their reduced revenue as a result of higher taxes. A higher tax rate always results in lower percentage of usable, usable income for people to support their local businesses, which in turn reduces income tax revenue for the city. During my seventy years on earth, I have witnessed the repeated cycle of increased taxes resulting in demand for higher wages, then resulting in higher prices, and starting over with the need again for higher taxes, so on and so on. People try to get ahead by working more overtime and second jobs. We started seeing families with children having both parents working, which results in a breakdown of family unity and less time to enjoy leisure time activities, such as those that parks provide. Please work on making Bucyrus stand out as leaders in turning this vicious cycle around. Do not ask for higher taxes. Put your efforts instead towards retaining and bringing in businesses, jobs, and residents. These will bring in needed revenue for parks and other operating expenses and improvements to our city. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any questions? Yeah.
I, I guess, Bill, for Bellevue, I'm familiar with people that live in Bellevue, and I, I know that they have a pretty good size manufacturing base up there. They got that.
Yes.
They.
They have, Bellevue has, uh, a company up there. It's called Tower Manufacturing, and they build a lot of car frames. And then they also have American Can up there in Bellevue, and they make all different kinds of, uh, condiment bottles, and you name it, and they make all different kinds of, uh, bottlings type of operations. I, I know that they have a lot of business.
So, yeah, their, their businesses.
For the mom people that live there.
Yeah, their businesses and, and incomes are what help them to afford, uh, more park budget money.
I have a question.
Anything else?
Who decides exactly how much goes into that park line item anyway?
Currently?
Yes.
It's your finance committee.
Administration brings it to our attention on what they recommend, and we, we adjust it, or approve it.
And do they have a breakdown of where the one hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars is spent, like, that we can look at?
On our, on our trial balance, it would be listed out on specific categories underneath that, that category.
Because it sounded to me like that coronavirus leap money can just be, everything can come out. I, it really did sound.
So we're getting along right now with the hundred and fifty thousand, and then this proposed income tax then is going to raise another three hundred and fifty thousand. So then, we're not necessarily going to give back the hundred and fifty thousand. We're just going to increase it to five hundred thousand, correct?
That's what he said. That's what he said. And fifty thousand of that, he wanted to go to a park director, which I, you know, would absolutely disagree with.
Actually, it would be more than that. It'd be more than fifty thousand.
Yeah, because the benefits and everything else, yes.
Whatever the base wage is, you multiply it by three.
Yes, so there's a hundred and fifty thousand, so the entire original park budget is going to support someone to direct the park. Okay, let me ask you this. Who is going to direct that money if we don't have a park director? Who's been directing it thus far?
Service director.
Service director.
I still, I still came up with the thought that we should have a committee made up of the different groups that use the park, and have them help figure it out. They would come to us, and then we'd.
I spoke with a few people that are on those boards. I heard you make that comment, and they said, we don't, we can't get enough people to help with our own stuff. There's no way in the world that's going to work, he said.
It, trust me, I was on the Little League board, and.
My daughter's on it right now.
When we were on there.
My dad was, too.
There was seven, eight of us, and it was the eight of us that did all, most of the work. So, it's limited. I mean, the coaches did their coaching, but all the other, all the other went back to the, the board, and, you know.
But if, if tho, if the head of the boards, of each board came to the meeting and said, hey, this is what we know we need, that would help figure out how to spend the money.
True, I'm just.
And I know that they all have knowledge as to what they need.
Well, as Public Lands and Buildings Chair, you could reach out to each of them.
I could.
And, and I'm not saying that to cheat.
No, no, I'm serious.
Honestly, that's probably the first place to start.
It'd have to be, because it's public lands.
Yeah. And you could request, this is similar to how we request people come into the meetings, request that they all be here biannually, annually, quarterly.
Yeah, let, let us know what, what the parks need, so we know where.
I think that's a great first step.
Part of this, part of this levy, though, I mean, there was, there was, there was, there was personalities let the administration know what their feelings were when it come to having a, a director.
I did.
So, I mean, and, and, and I know I'm not speaking for anyone else, but I thought there was kind of a consensus that there was an understanding that. that not all councils in favor of having a administrator of a park.
So...
But if, if we don't have it in concrete writing,
Right.
It, it's...
So, at some point...
I can't support it if it's not written down.
Are they gonna come to us at some point with, with our decision of yes or no, whether this moves on to the ballot? Is that how this works?
Yeah, uh, council has to pass legis, uh, three pieces of legislation, uh, in order to get it onto the ballot.
And we, we direct the language.
Well, and, and I was thinking, if, if it says that, you know, X amount of money's gonna be raised, if you're gonna hire a parks director, that has to change the billlet.
It does.
So this group would have to oversee that and approve that, I guess, is the stock gap there, is what you're saying?
The, the other thing is, um, I talked to Mr. Dunn. He said a hundred thousand would be more than sufficient to cover what is needed at the parks. That would help cover the improvements to the restroom facilities like out at Allmiller at Lyons. And then each year, there's a set project of improvement of the shelters and playground equipment and such and such. He's saying there's no need for an additional three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
No, and, and since we decide how much money goes in that line item, I don't understand why with a list of concrete projects, hey, this is what we need to get done this year. That money can't be put in there rather than raising people's taxes.
I mean, when we buy a car, we have to save and budget for a car, for a family car or whatever. I mean, why can't we do it as a city?
For a car, it's gonna need new tires and an oil change and gas in the tank.
You do it by the year, you don't do it all at one time.
And the day you buy it, you start saving for your next car.
Yeah.
Okay, question. Alright, I know a lot of us had said that we would look into this because if, if the, if the voters of the city want another tax, they should have the right to say, I want it, or the right to say, kick bricks, we can't afford it. That was, that was the one thing of putting it on the ballot that I was okay with. My question is then, because then we'd have to figure out the wording, and anything to keep it A for having a parks director hired as part of this, because we know people are against that.
That has to come through the billlet here.
But that, that's what I'm saying, would, would us figuring out, you know, fine, whoever the chair of Public Lands and Buildings would meet with Dunn, who's kind of in charge of that area of expertise for the city, along with somebody else to decide what's needed, to bring that to council then, and that would eliminate the need for a parks director?
That's no doubt idea.
I mean, I, I literally just put that on myself, but at the same time...
Being the volunteer parks director?
That...
Kind of.
My, my grandfather's brother did that for many years, his name is out there. And he, he and his brothers literally just said, hey, we need baseball in this town, hey, we need these parks fixed, and that's what they did. And they were the umpires and they were the coaches and they were, you know... And every kid in our family has played baseball. Every single one of us, like, so, I mean, yes, this is near and dear to my heart, knowing that we need parks, but I also know that our people don't need more taxes, but if they, if they save, they do, that's fine. That's, that's not my say to say it for everybody, so...
Thing is, we have, how many people vote? Twenty-four hundred, whatever it is?
It was eleven percent last time.
Okay. Are you willing to let those eleven percent decide for the hundred percent?
I will speak to that. That's what happened to the city schools on the renovation of the middle school. They passed it in a February election, if you remember that. That's how the school got to renovate. And that's when I kept going to the school board and letting them know that, no. But that's, that's luck of the draw, that's the luck of the draw of going to a ballot, now I...
My experience is the older population in Bucyrus votes, and, no offense, but those, those older people being my parents' age, Bill's age, they don't pay income tax. I do. So they're deciding for me.
That's kind of what happened out of Colonel Crawford.
I'm just saying.
That's how, unfortunately, how it goes.
That's, that's what happened out of Colonel Crawford, the younger generation voted to have the retirement taxed for the schools, and my mother pays a whole lot on them.
It's, it's a double-edged sword, because on one hand, do I have the right to say yes or no, you as a voter can't say so?
Well, and then those people who do work and get sick of paying taxes or paying high taxes just move out. But, and then you don't get that tax money at all.
But you go to those people and say, that we're giving you your say, please go out and vote. I, I ask everybody to vote, I do it all the time. I have taken people to sign up, I've taken people to vote.
Alright, well, we don't have to deci- decide on this tonight, we got good input from Bill, I appreciate the information.
I appreciate you, Bill.
That, that helps. We'll go ahead and table this and, you know, get more information and we can discuss it at the next.
May I ask a question now?
Yes.
Soon you have to have the decision made, you could get that one...
This has to be by August.
I thought it was ninety days before the election?
Ninety days.
Ninety days before the election, I think is the minimum.
August third, I think, I remember here.
Second is very...
I just didn't wanna see it have to be submitted, uh, like, like, May third, like independent voters have to be, you know, in there.
No, it, we can find out, but I do remember that it is in August, at August, but we can find out the exact date. We got a little bit of time.
I can honestly say that if the people who want this aren't going to be at the meetings, it's, we'll have to go to next year if, if we don't get it passed before that or whatever, you know? Let's not be mean, but, you know, there's people who keep saying that they've got information or whatnot and they're not here.
Right.
Sorry.
Now, we got a little bit of time, I'd rather table this so that we can work on this. Alright, there's nothing else?
Oh.
Yes.
Well, no, when we talked about the rules and stuff earlier, and that's you guys, um, figuring out who has to contact whom to be able to change line items on our stuff. We, we talked about, you know, if the administration wants to suddenly change the minute, the, the meeting, what's going in or out of the meeting, they needed to go and talk to the person in charge of putting it together?
I don't, I think, do we have to refer to that in a council meeting to this committee?
I, that's in the, the rules and regulations, which is...
See, we said it's already in our rules, I mean, our, our rules already say that council president sets the agenda.
So all people, I just wanted to have it stated out loud that people need to go to the council president to set the agenda.
Between the president and the clerk, maybe they just need to put forth a, I don't know, a statement to the administration, hey, here's, here's the procedure, if something needs to happen, here's what we need you to do.
Yeah, council president ought to be able to state what he wants to talk about in his meeting. He doesn't need any outside forces telling him what to do.
Or changing it.
Or changing it.
Unbeknownst. It's one, you know, they should come and say, hey, we need this added to the meeting, and then he can do that, but them just doing it, I think that's, that's part of the...
I, I, I think council president could just really send him an email or a memo or whatever to say, hey, here's, here's the procedure that we'd like you to follow, thank you.
So, do we need to make a directive for him to do that?
I think it was done.
Yeah.
I think he did tell administration, if you need something from Todd, you come to me.
Well, at this point, if they need something from, from Todd specifically, you...
Cuz even in the past, if something wasn't submitted to them on, it used to be on Fridays, and then they watered it down and made it to Monday afternoon, you know, it...
It had to be a twenty-four hour notice prior to...
Yeah, I, I, that really got watered down at that point in time. Always before, it was the Friday before.
It's probably with the advent of the computer versus, you know, a typewriter or handwritten, it probably made it easier to add it a little closer. But, yeah, I...
I mean, if, if we've gotta get the, the line crossing stopped, we need to put something in place that makes it better so we can hopefully function.
Maybe if nothing else, the next time we're together and council president's with us, we can just reiterate to him that we would like him to send a memo outlining that procedure or, or re, re, that's what I'm gonna say.
Oh, I'd like to have us all be a part of it, because I don't want any...
Right.
And I think one of the, one of the sources of conflict, and maybe this is where it begins a little bit, is when finance committee adopts its rules for Mr. Hill and adopts his job description, we wanna make sure that in there is, that changes to the agenda only come from council or the council president, uh, is it, that's, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yeah, that, I mean, I, I just knew that that was something that we'd stated, needed to be stated and, and put, so I just...
So, when, when we, we adopt that job description, I think we'll just have to make sure that...
More fit to say it.
If it's, if it's not already in there, can we add it, as soon as we requested?
Yeah, that's, that's what he was saying.
I got you now, I picked it up with you right now.
Sorry.
Okay.
I just, I, I'd like us to function and be a functioning body and till the next election and hopefully everybody can be, getting along after that.
I just feel good about the meeting that we've, the council is actually gonna take care of our own business.
Yes.
And we will be the directors of our own business.
Okay. Anything else before I adjourn?
Are you adjourning finance?
Then he contacts you, you contact Joyce.
It, it goes on the timesheet.
It goes on the timesheet.
The timesheets you get signed every week, or every two weeks, I'm sorry, so, so the finance committee chair will, will be signing those. And there's a sheet that we have, the timesheet.
Well, we gotta wait till finance is closed up.
Or vacation time or sick days or whatever.
Okay, I just didn't understand exactly how that would go.
Yeah, cuz we, we, we do our timesheets on paper, uh, so, it'll just get approved by, by the department.
Okay. With that...
Fin, well, finance, finance has to...
With that, I will adjourn finance at eight twenty-six PM. Public participation.
More, more, oh, um, we need to make sure that everybody knows that the council clerk's office is being opened by council as of tomorrow morning. Just a reiteration of everything for...
Yeah, yeah.
And, um, the keys, do we have to get those back from Scott Kent?
We, we probably will, I'll, I'll ask, uh, one of our esteemed police officers up in the morning shift to pick them up.
Why, why not now? No.
Good luck, courthouse is closed.
No, they're at the sheriff's office.
They're at the sheriff's office, and the police can get in there, they drop people off at all hours.
Okay. With that, uh, at, I'm asking for motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Start it.
All of the favor say aye.
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 Eight twenty-seven.